All right, it's five o'clock. I call this work session to order. Um, we have quite a few discussion items on here. Is there any one topic that someone would like to lead off with? Otherwise, we can uh start at the top.
I don't see our young artist.
Yeah, you couldn't make it tonight.
They're not gonna make it, so.
Track me.
My understanding with that is there was real no opposition to that going forward. If there's any.
I think it looks good.
I don't like it.
Okay. So let's I think that gives staff
I'm opposed.
direction. That there's no opposition. You you said you are opposed?
Steve, what's opposed?
I am opposed. I don't think it's a good idea.
Oh, okay.
No.
Okay. So we're somewhat divided on that. Okay. Next up would be Lyons Park. I know how you feel about that.
That's you.
That's me. And
Except I think it's Ted too.
Well, it's all of us.
I know that's, I know it's got your name on it, but I think I was the one that asked Scott to bring it up again. As I stated before, I'm not in favor of changing the name. Uh, I did some research. And the Lyons, not only did they donate financially towards that park, they also put in a lot of
Sweat labor.
Physical, physical labor.
Right. Right.
And the biggest, the biggest thing that I've heard is, you know, why, why shouldn't we change it because the Lyons don't have a, an active membership in our community anymore? Well, using that criteria, we've got Goodrich Park, Covo Park, Slokan Park, Norman Park, and even Farnell Field.
And Gee.
And none of those have active family members. But it's, it's what they are. It's, it's our history. And I don't, I don't think we should change it. I know Mr. Rowe had brought up the point that Edith Mungar has a historical marker in Lyons Park, I think, which I think is wonderful. So he suggested naming the park after her. If we walk outside the door, we'll see that Ruth Thompson has a historical marker right in front of City Hall. We didn't change when uh Slokan Park to Thompson Park. So, I am, I am not opposed if Water Dog wants to repair that deck and uh the landing there, make it better for their customers and for the public to use as a launch. But, and call that Water Dog Doc is fine, but to change the park, I'm totally against it.
Does anyone else wanna weigh in on that?
I, I don't like the idea of corporate renaming of anything. I guess is the way to put it for me. I, I'll use Mr. Connell's example from when it was brought up before about LC Walker Arena is always gonna be LC Walker Arena to me. I don't care if some bank or medical facility or whatever donated a whole bunch of money to it. I don't believe in changing the name of a place like that, so, and I don't, you know, I just, I don't, I'm, I'm not opposed to Water Dog having some kinda plaque or something down by the launch if that's what they wanna repair. But, I'm not in favor of renaming the park Water Dog Park.
I'm gonna agree in, in not changing the name. I mean, if we're gonna name something after somebody, we should probably name that new property we got in the marsh up there, Ducks Unlimited Park or something, cuz they put in a whole lot of money towards
Did it?
But, they're not asking to do that and I don't, I don't know if it's even got a name, but but uh
I think it's the Bishop Property.
The Bishop Property, that's
That's what has been discussed as, as, so.
We could call it DU Landing or something like that, or I don't know.
Hopefully we call it River Bottom soon.
Hopefully we just call it the Marsh.
Yes. Keith?
Um, I don't see any problem with doing a sponsorship, but I don't think we should necessarily change the name of the park at this point. If they wanna do a sponsored by or a, like they suggested, Wardock sponsoring this launch or something like that. I think that naming it off after their business would also create some confusion over if it's public, right, public park or not. So, that's my two and a half cents.
I'm in favor of keeping the dialogue open with the company as to uh another means to recognize gratitude for their, their offer of um the, the maintenance effort. I, I think that sort of public-private partnership is, is beneficial. But I think the historical legacy of the, the existing name is important too. So whether that's like sponsored by or, or some other way of, of recognizing their contribution, there's probably something we can come up with to compromise.
Okay. My feelings certainly align with the rest of yours that it's not necessary to change the park. When I bought it before the council, it was certainly not as an advocate for changing the park was to discuss it. We had an offer and I think, as you say, it's if they wanted to do a little sponsorship of it, fine, I support that, but I think, so, at this point, I think we send, certainly can send staff the recommendation that park remain Lyons Park. All right, hotel, motel ordinance. Is there anyone that's opposed to this proposed ordinance? Or has any comments that we'd like to make about it?
Well, it sounds like it's been recommended that we don't really need it. Is that the way I read this?
That's not my interpretation.
There's not a, a, a name associated with this one? I mean, the paragraph describing it here, whose um perspective is that representing? Is that
Yeah, that, that's Scott's. He's basically recommending that, just like Scott Brown said that an ordinance isn't necessary. He spoke with the hotel motel and the vacant building ordinance. He thinks it can be approached a different way by enforcing the IPA International Property Maintenance Code versus adding another layer of ordinances that staff will have to deal with, whether it's registrations or code enforcement. That was his recommendation. To not move forward with an ordinance.
Now, if that's, if that's the staff recommendation, I would be very happy keeping that card in our, our back pocket as a potential future option. Believe me at that.
I guess we should've started with the International Property Maintenance Code.
Yeah. Probably should've.
Well, do you wanna skip ahead to that one?
Yeah, if you want. Um, so, this is just my five cents. So Toby from Muskegon Charter Township does our rental inspections. He's through our area on a regular basis. I think there's a lot of overlap between what he's doing and what we're trying to do on ordinance enforcement, as well as property maintenance code. I think as we saw last night, the building line item for the building department is fairly well-funded. I think it would be a good idea to uh look at having Muskegon Charter Township manage both international property maintenance code as well as our ordinance enforcement. He's gonna be at all those properties. He's gonna be driving the alleys. He's gonna be looking at all that stuff. Then we don't have to worry about it. It'll help clean up the city. I think it, it, it will make a huge difference having him do it.
Anyone else? So it's, I
You're talking about having them also be an, an ordinance enforcer?
Yeah, he does that for other municipalities as well.
So
So when he drives around, he'll be looking at rental uh property maintenance code on residential and commercial and ordinance. I mean, it's all kinda all intertwined anyways.
So you're, but you're only talking about something that applies to buildings and rentals or or are you talking all ordinances within the
All, yeah, all ordinances. So he take care of the grass, the grass height and all that stuff?
Our police department won't be overseeing that anymore?
I I look at it this way, um as an inspector, yeah, you're there, you look at certain things and certain details. And, you know, when you have someone that does it on a regular day, those things become a little bit more apparent sometimes. Our police department does a great job at fighting crime, and I think they should continue to fight crime and not worry about ordinances. Is my personal opinion.
So what kind of uh money are we talking to have this man do that?
This um contract that I'm looking at right now from, from Muskegon Charter Township says six thousand dollars annually. Um, and then any fees, any, you know, fees or violations, we would get to keep those fees. They wouldn't go to Toby. So six thousand a year. This one is focusing on, the scope is referring basically just to the IPMC at this point, so I don't know if that, if need to be folded into that as well, but
I can't believe that if he was gonna be the ordinance enforcer for the city, then that he was gonna do that for six thousand dollars.
You're gonna be busy.
I mean, I just
I, I think that's probably something we need to get a clarification on, and what would be is if he was gonna be the total ordinance enforcer for the city, what his fee would be then?
And how many hours per week or per month is, is dedicated to that, that job function? Obviously, six grand's not a full-time position.
I'm not sure what our ordinance says about things like, I know that you can't have unregistered or unlicensed cars sitting around in your parking lot for, or in your driveway or whatever for too long, but I'm wondering if the same thing goes for boats because there's a boat sitting in this yard over here on the corner of uh Alice and Division, is it?
Yep.
And that boat has probably been sitting there for how many years? I don't know.
Over twenty.
It's in, it that, that property's a blight on the city. It might, you know, it was terrible on the house itself.
There, they, those situations would be taken care of with their international property maintenance code. You know, we just, we don't have anyone to enforce that on the residential side or really the commercial side. The fire department has done a little bit with the property maintenance code. Try to, because of the business registration side, cuz we didn't wanna hit people twice. But, you know, that's uh you know, definitely those types of the buildings, the garages there falling down, you know, all, all those, those blight issues would all be taken care of with that that code set. We just, it's, we already have the code. It's just getting someone to go and actually enforce that.
Well, considering six thousand dollars for a Muskegon Charter Township, I believe Muskegon Charter Township probably has three, four times the number of homes than the city of Whittall, I'd guess. That's a pretty good-sized area, I think. I'm not sure exactly what the boundaries are for Muskegon Charter Township, but being right next to Muskegon, probably be a pretty highly occupied area.
I believe they do contract work for Roosevelt Park. And I'm trying to think of the, there's a couple of other ones they do contract work for. I think Laketon Township maybe.
The IPMC is we already have that incorporated into our city ordinances as something to be complied with, so it's not it's not necessarily adding new regulations. It's, it's just more consistent uniform enforcement is what we're looking at.
According to Word on the Street, the back row back there, Scott is saying that it is for both. So you're saying all
Toby, Toby has said that.
Toby is saying, okay.
He says for both.
Okay, so it's not just the IPMC?
Of course, ordinance enforcer.
Okay.
That's for residential and commercial?
Correct.
Correct.
So we've already gotta have some money budgeted for that type of stuff anyway. I would guess, is there, you know, is that just part of other, you know?
Well, IPMC isn't technically being enforced at this point, other than, I mean, the police would be doing ordinances, just general ones that are on our books, but the IPMC, there isn't really anyone currently out there
I would think they, I would think they'd be glad to get that out from under the police department. Is that right?
You'd probably almost give up six thousand dollars out of your budget, isn't that accurate?
No.
I will.
Um, Brendan, do you know roughly how much in the positive the building department does annually? Cuz I know it's quite a bit in there now. You know, Brian?
I, I do not. You know, Tanrey Bay and Timber View and
All the construction.
that just, you know, that's, that's where the money came from, so, you know, those will go away.
Right.
I, I don't, Keith, I cannot answer that.
But is it something you'd like to pursue?
I would definitely say yes.
I, I agree. I think that sounds like a, a good thing.
You're worth it. You're worth it a lot more than six thousand dollars on a lot of other things.
I don't think there's any opposition here.
Okay.
And we're talking that the vacant building ordinance, international property code, and the hotel maintenance.
Right.
All these three subjects would be covered or
With the code enforcement, correct?
With the code enforcement
Yeah.
by Toby.
I would think that after the first year, he's probably gonna have it a lot easier. I mean, if he goes out and
It's true with any type of, the original first tying through was the hard part and after that just maintenance.
So I think that the direction that the council would like the staff to, to go into.
Okay.
So with that, are we going to then come back and see more, more detail as to the, the cost structure?
Yeah.
Okay.
And I, I suspect that that will cover your ordinance enforcement, Mr. Brown?
I, yeah, I'll save my comments for right now. Don't need to make them if, um, if we're gonna have somebody that's gonna actively seek, you know, enforcing the ordinances.
I don't know how that system works as far as Toby would make note of a violation and they, the city would send a letter or send an officer saying, here's a violation. I'm, I'm not sure how that, that would all
I'm assuming it would be just like rental, they just kinda handle it.
Yeah, they have their own administrative staff that currently sends letters.
Steve, you wanna talk about road construction?
Yes. Well, the one thing I brought up last night was a chip and seal, which we don't do currently, apparently. And um, and the county does it rigorously every year. They're chipping sealing roads all through the countryside and all over the place, and I gotta believe that there has to be some payoff to that, or they wouldn't do that. And also Montague does do that. And what I see of their roads is they don't have these creases that have the freeze, crack, thaw problem every winter. That, that seems to happen to our roads. Um, I talked to Jeff Ock, I don't know, maybe a week ago. And I asked him, you know, what, what do you do on your roads? He said, well, we bid it out as, as we do. And uh but we tell them after they, after it's all set up and everything, that we gotta have an extra two inches of aggregate underneath that asphalt to begin with. He says they require an extra two inches of aggregate now. Whether that's cost efficient or whatever, I don't know, but I think making, making roads last longer is a good good thing. Um, he said they do a first layer of asphalt over that then. And then the manhole covers, they come to them, they have the first layer down. And they cut out maybe six, eight inches, however much it is around each manhole cover, go down and put cement up to the level of that first layer of asphalt. And when they do the second layer of asphalt, you don't get this drop down around manhole covers that we seem to have a problem with, cuz even roads that have been done not that long ago, you see people dodging the manhole covers cuz there's a big old bump and and I don't know, you know, Brian may have other ideas, but uh that's pretty much, that's pretty much all I got from him. They do a, a chip and seal thing and they say it adds a good five years to the uh life of a road. And I would think it might even be more than that. Considering that you don't have this freeze, thaw, crack business that seems to happen to our roads. And I'm wondering too if uh our paver when we have like a wider road, like the ones that have the bike lanes on the sides, and they do three strips of paving. You end up with a seam down the middle of each one. Is there companies that do a wider strip than that, or is that the standard, is everybody
Wide and
Pardon me?
A paving box is twelve foot wide. So that's why you have, if you have twelve-foot lanes, you know, you have, you're gonna have that seam down the center. Well, with the bike lanes, like on Warner Lewis, they try to offset that so that riding on that seam.
Okay.
That's why we have those, those in there. And in time, you're, you're supposed to go through and uh crack seal. And like you had mentioned, Steve, then after that, after you do a crack seal, you let that sit for a year, maybe a little longer, and then you would do some type of rehabilitation, whether it be chip seal or a thin overlay or something of that nature.
What, what about um this two-inch extra aggregate underneath?
Yeah, I don't quite understand what he's saying. Is he saying that he needs ten inches of base then?
I don't know. That's, that's what he said. They, he said they, they get their bid and they say, they tell them, well, we want to pay extra for an extra two inches of aggregate.
When they build roads?
When they build, when they, like if you tear up a road and re, repay the whole thing.
We, we construct at eight inches and that's kind of a standard. Now, if they're asking for ten,
That sounds like what they're, that sounds like what they're doing.
Yeah.
And of course, everybody knows that concrete lasts, what, about twice as long, but that's not feasible to do concrete unless you have a specific situation like the Dowling Street Hill.
Right, where it's sliding down the hill.
And it sounds like they're gonna have to do that same thing on the Stanton Street Hill somewhere in the near future.
Yeah.
They're gonna do that concrete also.
Concrete's twice the, twice the expense and it's very loud to drive on compared to a, you know, freshly paved road with asphalt versus concrete, cuz they have to rough that up if they don't. You know, it gets very slippery, so.
And then you talked about, Jeff and you both talked about using the smaller stone or something like that, and that was so I don't know what you think about this other idea about the manhole cover areas that seem to sink.
And we started to do that much like everyone else now because of that fact. So compaction usually around a manhole doesn't fare very well, especially when they're not sealed properly, so.
Is it part, is part of the problem our contractor that we always seem to get the same guys?
No, no, we don't actually. We, we've had a, you know, variety of them lately.
Oh. Does it seem, he, I asked him about that and he says it seemed like we usually end up with API, which is asphalt papers out of Spring Lake or something like that.
Correct, out of Muskegon API.
Muskegon?
Yep.
Whatever it's called. He said they usually end up with them and I don't know
And everyone does.
if that's part of it or part of the problem or what, I don't know.
I don't think so, Steve, because it's monitored, you know, by our engineers and you know, the mix there at the plant. And when it gets here, temperatures and the whole cake and all, so I mean, everyone uses either API or re-frialing. KPI mostly here.
I'm, I just that's just been always one of my pet peeves is driving on some of the they seem to prematurely go bad i- in my opinion. And maybe they don't all, but it seems like we have our share of them. So
Agreed.
That's all I wanted to bring up, so.
All right, anyone want to comment on that?
I, I just think we might you know, the, the money that we're spending on some of the newer roads in the last few years and that coming up in the next couple of years, maybe need to look at you know, what, what we can do to make them last longer while they're still good. Instead of, you know, like you said yesterday that, you know, you can't do chip seal on you know, on most of the roads we got that are falling apart because they're too far gone already. It's, it's not gonna do anything. You can put it down, but it's just gonna pop right back out.
Right.
So maybe, maybe look at some type of a you know, an annual maintenance thing on some of the some of the roads that we're fixing, you know, in the la, like you said, in the last few years or the next couple of years we got coming up to try to get another five or 10 years out of them instead of you know, instead of I, I'm pretty sure Warner Street was just done ten, maybe 12 years ago.
Ninety-six.
Was it that long ago?
Yes, sir. Yes, it was paved in the snow.
I thought it was, I just thought it was ten, twelve years ago that it was redone, but time flies. That's all I have.
Brian, that, just, I, I don't expect like a exact percentage, but what's the cost of um actually milling and paving versus chip seal?
I have, well, again, that was, that's a tough one, but we went, talked about this last night. I do have prices or quotes from the county uh to do chip seal on Peach Street, which would be between Lewis and Benston. Also Spring Street, all the way to Hall from uh Spring Street Lot all the way to Hall.
I was just curious if it's even worth it opposed. I mean, if you have a I'll throw a word out there, like Industrial Park, it's got curb on both sides. I'm assuming it just needs to be milled and repaved.
Correct.
So in a situation
Those roads are basically in good shape.
So in a situation where the road base is fine,
Yep.
is it worth chip sealing it?
Absolutely not. At that point, you would, you know, set the mill at an inch and a half, take that first course off and, and pay.
Okay. So it's a complicated question.
As with so many things, not a simple answer.
No.
All right. We have deer culling. I know that's near, near to Mr. Holsh- Holstrom's heart, but uh, does anyone wanna pipe in on that?
I think he was just looking forward to allowing hens with his
I don't see that happening here. And I know he, he refers to Montague's situation, but what they have is a different situation than us. They have multiple areas of
Large acreage.
Large acreage that, that they can do that.
We have very
We have very little.
Very few, very few spots within the city that granted, there are some areas that I don't know. I mean, I, I guess if, if it could be controlled, if you take uh between Warner and Peach, there's a very sizable open area back there that would be adequate for for bow hunting. I mean, definitely you couldn't do any rifle hunting anywhere. But I don't know about the property owners. You know, cuz that's, that's, it's not city property, you know, you're, you're you're talking uh
My understanding is those property owners are not in favor of culling.
Yep, and if, and if they don't, you know, I mean, my wife is. She's, she's tired of seeing her flowers getting eaten up, but uh you know, what are you gonna do? We can. We just don't have the room.
Yeah. I would offer up my property for a little bit of culling, but when you get down into that ravine there, trying to figure out where the property lines is, is, it's a little bit of guesswork. They go at angles and but I think anything we can do as far as continued public education about the inappropriateness of deer feeding would help because I think that is still occurring. Some people maybe with the best of intentions think that they're helping the wildlife by throwing a little food out for them and you know, the, the deer don't need our help to make it through a winter. You know, the, the deer don't need our help to make it through a winter. Deer evolved in this environment. They're. They're evolved to survive the winter without humans feeding them.
Neither do birds.
That's one of the problems is you get a lot of brushy areas in the city where the deer feel safe. And then just outside the city limits like behind Goodwill over there, you got big cornfields where they love corn. And then you got an alfalfa field and the golf course, all great places for deer to go eat, but. They probably don't do much out there in the middle of the day very often.
They're in people's yards during the day and then in the brush in the city and that's where they hang out, so.
So Jeff, you're running late, man, running late.
You're actually just on time.
It's not, it's not going well.
Deer out of my yard.
There you go, on that topic.
I'd like to see us try to do something more than, I mean, obviously whatever we've done so far trying to educate. Isn't working, but there, there's way too many deer in the city, so. How we control it, I don't have any idea, but uh. Now that the band's here, we can, we can let him throw his two cents out since we already all threw ours out.
And I missed it all. Damn. Um, yeah, this kinda sits with me. Um, every night it's deer in the yard, deer in the yard. Um, yeah, something, something's gotta be done. I, I don't think a call is gonna work. Um, expense wise. I do think, and I've been approached by a few people now that this has been brought up. About uh the bow hunting in uh, um, in the city with um. Limits and uh Montague has pretty much a, pretty simple. Ordinance that they pass to do it and I think we could do the same thing.
That came up that Montague has a number of areas that they've designated that fit the. Profile that we don't have.
They do, but they don't. I mean, if, if you look between Peach Street and Warner Street. And um off of Alice Street in that curve that goes over to uh Lewis. Um, there are several large lots and plots and city property and other things where this could be done. They all, a- a- all we can do is try. Um, all they're gonna do is, other than the ones that get hit and killed and, and die over from old age. There's, the population is gonna increase every year. Doves have one to two, one to two babies every year.
Sometimes three.
Sometimes three, absolutely. And they're a pretty healthy population from the look of the bird seed in my, my.
Maybe we should start with a, a letter to property owners that would be potential and say, well. Your thoughts on that?
Would you put it in the next newsletter? I mean, that would be a, would be a, a, a way to do it. I mean, um. I, I don't, I don't think this needs to be a huge production by any means. I mean, Montague just pretty much passed it and it. Kind of works, it works its way through. The hunters, as, as somebody that's been hunting since age thirteen, it, it'll, the hunters will find out. And they will either come and check or they will um somehow figure out how the system works and, and. We're a pretty savvy group when it comes to that, so. And especially like I said, with the health of the herd and the potential.
We almost have to set it up so there was some kind of a quota where you had to shoot so many does. Or whatever before you could shoot buck because bucks aren't gonna make much difference as far as the deer population. Cause if there's does around there and there's no bucks, the bucks will come in from somewhere and.
They will, they'll come in from the township, but I know a lot of people that hunt in the township also, um, and it's, it's allowed there. Um, I do believe Whitehall Township is a no firearms from thirty-one this direction. Uh, they passed that a few years ago, so that's all bow hunting and crossbows. Like I said, I think it's just something we, we can try out, see how it works. And if it doesn't work, it doesn't work, but um Montague seems, seems to be working for them. People get it, I mean, one deer is three deer the last, the next year, so I mean, it's just, we've gotta, we've gotta reduce the burden. And I don't see any other way to do it.
Well, I'm certainly not opposed to putting something in a, the next new li- newsletter and seeing what public opinion is on this. I mean, we've kicked it around. Numerous times.
You know, I'm wondering, you, you know, the area behind my house, of course, that's all school. Property, I mean, it's the ball fields, but between my house and the ball fields is that.
There's, there's.
And they are plentiful.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely. And, and they wander all over. I had a few right in city, the park next to us here. Um, last week I came through and there was three of them standing in the park here. I mean, they're just, they're brave and brazen and they don't care.
Yeah, but I don't know, you know, I don't know what the schools. Situation, if they would allow.
Yeah.
People to.
And I think Montague actually allows them, if, if people wanna, two, two jurisdictional people that share a same boundary wanna. If they fit the criteria, they allow them.
Right.
To do that, um, which would help. I, I know all by the water tower, I mean, we've got a pretty select area. I mean, it's not gonna happen down here. Spring Street and everything else, but in the outlying areas, those deer, like I said, they migrate all over the place. They get pushed out when the herd gets big enough, they push out to other areas, so.
Can we, you allow it in the unused portion of the industrial park?
Oh, I, I would.
There's a lot.
Home and way out behind fire department, out behind Highlight, off of Benston Road, the school property. I mean, we'd have to check with the school whether they could. Will they allow to punt the school property there at Warner and Benston. Um, there's a lot of trees. Yeah, put pine trees in back in that way. I know there's a lot of them back there, but like I said, I just think it's something that's worthwhile. I know I, I've heard from a lot of people that. The damage and there's been a lot of damage. Pine trees are grazed all the way as high as they can reach, so.
They're doing a real good job of trimming the bushes in front of my house.
Good luck raising a hosta in this town.
Oh, okay.
Deer cocaine.
Yeah, exactly.
I got real nice ones in my backyard.
I'm feeding the deer, but I'm doing it on purpose.
That tall before they got hit.
Oh, yeah, yeah, it doesn't take much.
Alright, is there anything on this list that you wanna have your say on? Cause we've gone through everything.
No, I'm, I'm, other than how the art wall turned on.
Uh, if they're not here, they're.
Doing school stuff.
Yeah.
Alright.
Off the table for next.
Alright.
If you don't mind, I got one other thing.
Yes. I, hey, I go down there.
Probably gonna be a question for Will.
That's gonna go as good as I get.
Um, so question, from what I understand Frontier is coming through and they're gonna put fiber in for all of Whitehall. They're not going to remove their old system. And there are municipalities that require aerial utilities that are not. Being used to be removed.
Uh, I don't know, I can uh.
Cause you know, they're kinda like uh our incident over there at Allison Division. I mean, all those, they're abandoning all those lines.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You know, so.
It's more work for you guys. You go on a wire down and it's an inactive wire.
Well, the new fiber is flat just like a fallen wire too, so that's another aspect of it, but I'm just curious.
Yeah, I haven't heard, but let me uh.
They are putting it up. They've gone to my back alley and put it up already.
Oh, that's already the, in, in progress.
Yeah, supposed to be like twelve times better than what we have now or something like that.
We have a cable company run for their money finally.
Yeah.
Okay.
Alright.
Good thing we didn't pay for that uh.
Yeah, study.
The study.
We got a new um house across the street from us on Mill Pond there. And so consumers came in and put in a new pole. It had to be a taller pole and they trimmed my trees back and they put a transformer up there because they needed another one. And then they put this new pole in about three feet from the pole that was already there. And then they moved their stuff onto that pole. I tried to get Spectrum to move their stuff onto that new pole. No, they're not, they're just not gonna do it. So there I sit with two poles out there.
And I, I guess that's an hour later question, when they do do that, you know, is there any way to force them to? Cause there's, I know there's a couple of spots in the city where there's three fo- three poles right next to each other.
Yeah. Which is crazy.
Okay.
No, and then no.
Yes, more. That's just something I wanna deal with.
I threatened Spectrum, I was gonna go out there and cut that pole off. Didn't make any difference.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
And then they come and dig all the poles down.
Yep.
Outages in the future.
Yeah.
So next up is informational items. You all received a copy of a letter we, we received. Is there anyone that would like to comment on it?
My first comment would be to the Whitehall City Council and it says it's disappointing to know that you approved a religious event. I didn't approve anything.
I've never heard it.
I never heard anything about it until I read this letter. So, um, I would like somebody to respond back to Ms. Dennis that. It was not approved by the city council in any way.
It's a, it's a, it's a countrywide thing. It's a countrywide, it's even recognized by the president and probably every state and just about every. Municipality in the whole country. I don't understand what her problem is. She can pray to whatever she wants to pray to, I don't care.
I think for the, for the public's benefit, I should say that we, it was a letter received from uh Ellie Dennis. Voicing her disappointment at a uh event held in the garden room this uh past week. Celebrating uh Day of National Day of Prayer. So she thinks it's a conflict of a church and state.
There is no such thing.
It wasn't, I, I, I read the, the proclamation that numerous other uh officials read. It wasn't a, an endorsement by the city. It was something that I read. I don't see prayer as a bad thing. As you said, it's been a part of this country since the beginning.
Yeah, also the country was founded on biblical principles and they all founders. You look back and you can, even the one that was considered a, not atheist, but maybe a.
Agnostic.
Agnostic. He still went along with all the ideas of doing those kinda things, even though he was not. Part of that. We give him a, Thomas Jefferson, I believe it was.
Is this new this year or just curious?
No, that, there's been that complaint in the past. And I think, I think the biggest issue is that it's done in. City hall where a lot of other communities have that National Day of Prayer in a church, you know, which I think she feels is more appropriate than in a governmental building.
But something we've been doing here for years.
Well, it started as an outdoor event and we were gonna be a backup as if it rained. And then I think the last couple of years, they just did it inside. To make it easier, so.
But I, I mean, i- if that's something that the council would prefer not to take place on city property, then we can certainly. Make that adjustment next year.
I don't have a problem with doing just what we are doing now.
Yeah, I was, I was not, uh, not present there. I don't know exactly what uh, what was held, but uh. I know that the, the concept of prayer is not unique to any one particular denomination or faith for that matter. I did wanna hear more specific complaint if uh, if there was something improper. Just prayer in general, I don't see as objectionable.
And just as a general, for, for all of your background, that room is allowed to be reserved by nonprofits. I mean, that's basically what I'm under the understanding, so, and I'm the one that takes care of reservations for that room. So if it's a nonprofit. Um, not someone going down there and selling their wares, then I, it's reservable, so. I mean, if you choose to have me, you know, not have a certain type of group, then that's certainly within your right to let me know that, but. As a general rule, that's how I make reservations.
There was recently a, a, a football coach or whatever in, it was somewhere out in Seattle or somewhere out west. Kennedy was his name. And he would do this just after the game and in the middle of the field all his own. He didn't ask anybody to come out there. Nothing and they ended up firing him. Well, the Supreme Court looked at that and they basically threw this separation of church and state stuff right out. Out in the garbage because they said that that's just wrong. You can't stop that guy from going out there. Even though more and more of his players would come out there and, and do a prayer with him after the game was over. He, he wasn't endorsing anything. He was just doing what he felt was right. The Supreme Court agreed with him, so. She can say what she wants, but she's wrong as far as Supreme Court ruling goes, so.
Well, there's nobody forcing you to be there. It's.
Right.
You know, if somebody wants to attend, they attend, and if they don't, they don't.
A lot of people need to learn that nowadays. You don't wanna go, don't go. It's real simple. Let other pe- let other people live their lives. I mean, if they wanna go, let them go.
That guy got his job back, but back passed, the way I understand it, so.
Okay. So the, the room was, was reserved by a, a group?
Yes.
Okay, um, this wasn't the, this wasn't the, the, the city sanctioning a particular religion. This was a, a group that. Reserved and used the room tonight. Okay.
Okay. If there's any further discussion on that, we'll move to public comment. Anyone from the public like to comment? Yes, Mr. Sherr.
Kim Seer, County Commissioner for this great white north area. Um, information from the county, new clerk Karen Bowie has been uh, uh installed as a new county clerk. Uh upon the uh retirement of uh our, our current county clerk and Deputy Clerk Ivy Wiltenberg. Is uh, is her deputy now. So we have some new leadership in the county clerk's office. Just another item, we are getting, I'm getting quite a few of these now. These are resolution or resolutions from different counties. And one of the things that uh, basically what it is saying, this resolution reads in particular. Resolution to instruct our representatives to oppose all firearms control legislation. Uh, I'm seeing these coming from different counties and basically what they're saying in a nutshell. Is the fact that if the federal government or our state government uh makes laws that violate the Second Amendment of the Constitution. Or the Michigan uh, uh Constitution regarding uh, uh. Being able to keep and bear arms that they will not uh comply. So I'm starting to uh get those. I've got a, a few of them now from, from different counties. And that's what we're seeing. And I just wanna say also that I appreciate you uh, uh letting us uh have our National Day of Prayer. Here in uh, in the, the city, city hall, so.
I have a question.
Uh, yes, sir.
Is it, I understand that a sheriff of a county can decide whether he's gonna enforce. A Second Amendment ban of any sort, all by himself, an elected sheriff.
That is correct.
Okay.
The sheriff, the sheriff has the power in the uh, in the county, so uh he can uh, and, and. I'm not gonna get deep into this, but there's a doctrine called the doctrine of lesser magistrate, which says that if the federal government, for instance, uh makes a law. Uh that uh clearly violates the uh Constitution of the United States, that the sheriff, being a lesser magistrate, an elected official. Uh can say, no, we're not gonna comply with that because it violates the Constitution. And the sheriff has taken an oath that he will uphold the Constitution. So that's how that works. Okay?
As has everyone on this council.
That's correct. Thank you.
Anyone else?
So, one quick mention, you probably already know this. The county sheriff in any county in Michigan. Has more power than the state governor. County sheriff can close the airspace over this county. And there's nothing she can do about it or anybody else. So thank God for county sheriffs and city police. Cause otherwise it'd be complete chaos out there. So before I talk about the primary thing that I wanted to mention was the, the whole park discussion. And I know for you guys, it's a settled issue, but I have some points I'd like to make. Um, there are a couple of things I wanna mention first. By definition, our, our planting landscape and gardens is basically planting food plots for the deer. So if we don't do something to regulate the population of the deer. So if we don't do something to regulate the population of the deer, it's, even if we can get everybody to stop feeding them, it's gonna continue to be a problem, and somebody mentioned crossbows, shotguns would work too. Barring everything else, we'll just get some police officers out there and let them take care of it. But it's, it's a real problem. Sharpshoots. So, regarding the concrete, um, you can correct me on this if I'm wrong, but doesn't waterproof concrete last a lot longer?
I would have, not being an expert in it, but I would have to say yes.
So.
Hydraulic concrete, as you referenced.
Yeah, basically, they couldn't figure out why the Roman Colosseum lasted so long, so they analyzed the concrete and discovered that they put fly ash in it, which filled in all little spaces between all the aggregate, and it makes the concrete waterproof, and water is what seeps into the, uh, road beds or the road surface, freezes and causes spalling and then breaking and then potholes and that whole thing. So maybe investment in hydraulic concrete might be a, a good suggestion. I don't know. Getting on to the whole question of the park. Rather than honor the Lions Club, which is now disbanded.
Just in the county, just in the, just in the city.
Just in the city, just in the city, I understand. But what I, the point I'm trying to make was that there were a, a quite a few members who put in a lot of time and effort in that park, and I would like to see them honored individually on a plaque similar to the plaque we've got for the fishing group down by the, the Fishing Dock. I don't remember what the name of that group is, but there are two people named there. So that's what I'd like to see. Now, somebody mentioned we wouldn't wanna rename, say, I think it might have been Steve, uh, Kovell Park or Funnel Field. Well, of course we wouldn't. Those parks were named after historic individuals. I mean, the funnels made huge contributions.
Much more do you have?
I'll try and make it quick. And, and, and so did Mr. Kovell and, and others. Individuals, that stuff is, is named after. And my point is, if we follow a, a pattern with naming these things after historic figures, we're not gonna lose the history of the town. And as it stands now, most of these kids have no idea who was who, how this town got started, who Mears was. Well, we named a street after them. And with Edith Munger, you know, we talked about Hart, we rejected them in Montague. I don't know why they were even considered, because her roots are here, and if you go to Oakhurst Cemetery, her whole family, including her father, is buried there. She graduated from not Whitehall High School, but back then it was Whitehall Normal School in eighteen eighty-one. And there is no person that anyone here, I, I would wager, could name who was more of a conservationist, conservationist than Edith Munger. And I think it would be fitting to name the park after her. Now, that's not saying we eliminate recognizing the Lions. I think the, the Eagles were involved. There's another sign in there that has the name of several other organizations that contributed to founding that park. And, you know, we, we continue to, to honor them. Getting on to the dock, okay, I don't have a prob- We've treated Mr. Water Dog with a huge amount of favoritism. And if you want me to go into details, I'll speak with you privately about that. Naming the dock after him and making that part of his operation, now we've created a problem. That's a public park. How much and how often is he going to be using that dock? I'm not saying he shouldn't be able to. I'm not even saying he shouldn't be able to name it after his business. But there, that's a huge consideration, and then we run into, now that borders state waters, and we get into livery permits and all that stuff, and is that gonna be adhered to? And finally, we've got handicapped access there supposedly, but there have been two incidents that I know of where people that had been called in to get people in wheelchairs out of there because they gotten stuck in the ground. So that's one improvement that definitely should be made in, you know, in perspective of ADA. Thank you very much for letting me go beyond time. I appreciate it.
Anyone else?
Good evening, I'm Tamara Horn. I'm a resident of the city of Whitehall. I wanted to add clarification to the, the Whitehall climate resolution topic that was discussed at the April eleventh work session. In twenty twenty-one, the city council unanimously approved the, the resolution for municipal operations only. It was never the intention to include all residences in the action plan. I know this because I was one of the citizen members on this council subcommittee before the council passed the resolution, and I was present at the meetings that specifically discussed this. At last month's work session, the city manager and current council members either misrepresented or misconstrued the intention and goals of the past resolution. Your talk of forcing residents to do anything is nonsense. As for the cost of hiring an outside consultant, for more than a year, multiple local experts have offered pro bono free advice and assistance in helping to develop Whitehall's climate action plan. Council members stop delaying. Engage with residents who want to help you with this process. Thank you for your time.
Anyone else?
I think they ought to, um, all these storage buildings we have all over the place, I think they ought to put solar panels on the roofs of all of them. They could probably supply half the state's electricity with all the, just, just cover the roofs of all these storage buildings with solar panels, and there you go.
Thank you for your comments. What else? We're adjourned. Let's start with. Let's start with Keith.
Uh, I have nothing to say.
Okay. Steve?
I think I had enough already.
I'm sorry that Brian left, but fast word along to him. I was real happy to see Santa sweep out today, taking care of the streets with the curbing anyway.
Two trucks.
By your place.
Yeah. Two trucks?
Yeah.
I've never seen.
Wish I'd have done that, I took the rest of my stuff from my yard and put it in that street that they kicked up this winter.
And what if, from what I, the ones that I observed anyway, it looked like they were doing a real nice job, so we needed that.
Yes.
Glad to see it.
Okay. John, nothing up here? Chris Brown?
I have nothing.
Same with me?
Nothing, I'm good. Is, is there anything that staff would like to bring forward?
Not this time, thank you.
All right. I have nothing I wanna bring up at this point. How about the public? It's public comment time. Any public comment like to? It appears not, so move on to old business. I don't believe we have old business. New business is Resolution twenty-three fifteen, delinquent bills. Anyone wanna?
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution twenty-three fifteen, delinquent bills.
It moved in second. Any discussion?
Uh, help us here property, and I'm assuming those are rentals in the, in the.
Yeah, it's a mix of rentals and.
All right, same person?
Um, I imagine so.
Helped with your properties.
Seven, oh, yeah.
Just an assumption. All right.
Okay. No, if there's no further discussion, roll call please.
Holmstrom?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Malali?
Yes.
Connell?
Yes.
Sikinda?
Yes.
Hiddleburg?
Yes.
And Salter?
Yes. Resolution twenty-three fifteen approved.
Last opportunity for public comment. Any public comment at this point? Yes.
On the move.
Good evening. Great to see all of you. I'm Sandra Cross, and I'm the director of the White Lake Chamber Music Festival, and I'm, I'm gonna share these with you in just a moment, but we have a wonderful festival coming up. Wanted to let you know about it. It's, uh, the first two weeks of August this year. We have a little, a few more months to go before we get there. Um, but we're busy, uh, making plans, so it's ten days of classical music, and there's evening concerts every night. Um, there's salon concerts at four P M. at the Book Nook and Java Shop, which are casual and free, no cost. There's children's events, a student recital, a cabaret night, which is the first time we're gonna do that, um, one of the evenings. But it's a whole ten days of some really wonderful music going on, and, uh, would like just to let you know about it, and we'd love to see you at some of the events.
What are the locations at, how does it book now?
Uh, the evening concerts take place at Saint James Lutheran. Some of the events are at the White Lake Golf Course Pavilion. So, uh, in years past, we've used a multitude of churches in the area, just because their facilities are great to use and acoustics are good. Um, this year, it just happens that we're just at one church. Can I pass these on?
Please.
I didn't know there was a, uh, stuff there.
Sneaks up.
We need some, like, yellow caution tape. Yes, it is, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you much. All right. So at, at that point, it appears we've come to the end of our business. Do we have any students? We do not have any students. We have no one wishing to speak further, then, uh, we're adjourned.
I'd just like to comment that this one is most efficient, though, I mean.